All right, we will call order the regularly scheduled board meeting. First item on the agenda this evening is the approval of the school board minutes from May 11.
Make a motion to approve that. From the other.
Joe, any further comment on that?
I see none.
Thorough as usual. Okay, hearing none, all was very significant, I would say hi. Pos, extensions, and a motion carries. Next up is approval of the non-public session minutes from May 11. Thank you, sorry. Thank you, Joe. Any further discussion about those? Hearing none, then. I was very significant, I would say hi. All those pos, and extensions, and a motion carries. Of course.
We just got that email from Mr.
Okay.
And I did respond and give them the information updated and on the process.
Thank you. And I didn't receive any other than what you forward. It was an email from Tony Grapo regarding some concerns about the LRT.
Okay.
Collaboration, the potential. Deb's not here, so is there?
No, she's not here, she just wanted to be reminded everybody to do the manifest.
That, I think, has been enforced. So then you're up, superintendent's report.
Okay, so one of the things I just wanted to remind you is, before we get to your policies, on the second middle column there, the IHCA summer activities, you are going to see a change at the next one, but it's only in the references. Legal references, this is going to be a slight change, and it just changed recently, so that's the only change.
We'll talk about that, yeah.
The support staff association has signed a newest agreement, so the copies will be sent out, the CBA copies will be sent out to everyone. And all parties, that's all set. Let's see. Included in the packet is a copy of the upcoming scheduled events. Does that help?
Thank you, by the way. Actually, we have a note to thank you for doing that, that's much appreciated. We made it to the band concert the other night, so, which was, the great kids lasted longer than I thought they would, but that was awesome. Yeah, no, it was nice. Yeah. No, I want to sit here, no, I'm gonna move. Yeah. Thank you for that.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to remind you that I did put, every once in a while, put in different policies. If things come up, I research through the policies and just give to you as a, as a heads up. So there were some policies that it just, as a matter of fact, that didn't come up again and I haven't responded, so that was good. Let's see. We did have several committee meetings. Okay, I'll do the rest in the agenda.
Thank you, and superman.
Thanks, just want to let you know how much we appreciate the staff members, how much they do every, every week and every month, and it's a lot, and the best effort to guide our students, I appreciate them. Preliminary test scores for this year's staffs are coming in, and the initial results are very promising. I'm actually really excited when we get them completely, and, you know, we can share at some point in time. But they're never always efficient till later on in the year. But procedures put in place by staff to administer all those things, and some of the expectations that we thought were really paying dividends. Senior trip was a really big success, the students loved it. You know, I know the last two years, there wasn't really anything extravagant, but I think it was just that intimacy that they had with each other, and just being able to go and just chill out, hang with each other, and it was just, that's what they loved anyway, so really nice, really nice for them to do that. Because you have the calendar, the list of the dates and stuff, there's no major changes that we know of. We're still waiting for a specific time for each great continuation. That one, I know it's on that list, we gave you, but that time may be changing. Let's see. We've interviewed a music teacher, or music teachers, and we're just doing reference checks right now, we should be making an offer soon. And then we're still looking for two more positions, not to mention paraprofessional positions. Planning for the summer started, we have a PD date of July 18th through the 20th, for teachers K through 12, to continue work with demonstrate success. And then also Jason, the new principal here at the school, has been visiting, getting in the staff. He was here yesterday, he was here today, and he's already taken that role and trying to get to know people and stuff, which is really nice. And then the work that we're doing is just a continuation of doing, one, the data, the data stuff that we're doing with demonstrate success, and student-led conferences. So we're busy with just the end of the year stuff, but we're getting through it. It's good, moving fast.
Thank you, Mark. Any questions for Mr. Superman? All right. Committee reports.
I have a question, do we meet again before the last day of school? We meet June?
The board, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you, sorry.
Okay, so I'm going to start with the emergency response safety committee we did meet, and we went over some of the basic areas of concern, and we do have that, again, we are having the homeland security come in on June 1st, and they will be doing a walkthrough. So if any board member wants to do the walkthrough, it's just really interesting. They look at the different areas, and they'll, you know, let us know, then they'll write up a report. And it's every four years, so we're doing this year. And, and they'll write up any reports that need to be, and give suggestions of something that needs to be.
Is there a scheduled time for that?
I don't, we may have time, I don't know, maybe, I'll have to check on the time, I don't really have the time yet. Drop my head, but yeah, that is, I can let you know about that. It is, it's really, yeah.
Sounds interesting, that's all.
It's at 10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. 10:00 AM.
It's okay.
Risk management did meet, and there are minutes to that, that meeting, and the professional development committee did meet, and we talked about the infrastructure of the plan. Remember that, it's a plan, it's a five-year plan. However, the state never, they didn't review the plan that we sent in in 2020. 20, yeah, that was it. And so we're due for another one, and we never get anything back on the other one. So we're just going to continue with our own five-year, and just, you know, present it to the department and pass it in that way. But looking through, reviewing, rewriting, changing some things, updating some documents, the standards themselves have not changed, so we'll be maintaining the same standards for professional development, but just modifying and updating. That's what we're doing then. That's it for the committees.
Thank you.
Well, such on risk management, one of the topics of conversation was dismissal in parking lot safety and vehicles and whatnot. And it was discussed, or possibly order more signage, you were going to work on it with, the parking lot dismissal time was, and I kind of sat back and watched a couple times, and there are, it seems like, and it could be just me, but it seems like some cars, elementary parents are trying to get out of the parking lot as quickly as they can to avoid the backup. Once the buses leave, it's like, then there's this giant backup of cars at Main Street. So I did ask Chad if he could have an officer on 112 more often. You know, he does like the busy weekends, or, you know, something's going on, or, or something, but if, if available, you know, and then I'm busy doing other things, it more often to try to get traffic to go quicker. But Mark was going to work on with Aaron, is that right, you and Aaron, we're going to try to work on some kind of a better flow.
We found, two, two problems we found was the fact that people don't pull up, so we were giving orders and signage.
Yeah.
What happens is you'll have a car that will pull up at the end, and then someone will stop right in the middle, so that backs all the cars all the way up, instead of pulling up to that tire. And then I also found that by putting cones out on this front end here, it walks off one way, it makes things move forward more fluidly.
Yep.
I think signage is the way to go.
We also talked about maybe putting someone out there in, like a duty, in an orange vest in the afternoon to keep traffic going. And, you know, when that car does stop in the middle and back stuff up, they can go and knock on the window and say, move forward, or something. So.
We get a parent's training day.
Or something, and that's not, yeah.
Is that, is that in front of the elementary school that that's happening?
Well, no, that's.
Or is it the transition between the elementary and the?
The transition, yeah. Yeah, it seems like everybody is on the same page, I've done it dozens of times. It just takes a while, it's just congested, and it just takes a while, and people are always courteous, and and it seems like everybody knows, is, like, is on the same page. I will say the cone in the element, in front of the elementary school, at drop-off and pickup, hasn't, in my experience, made things easier, it's made it, because it cuts down ways that you can pass and move forward, and but, I mean, I think, I think that the new vice principal, if I remember his resume, I think he has redesigned, that was one of the things on his resume, they redesigned pickup or drop-off or re, so maybe we can ask him.
There was, I mean, I saw one near miss that made me really nervous, when, and it was an elementary parent trying to get out, I'm assuming, quickly before the backup, and there was a, I don't want to say he was middle school, but he was not a tall high school, if that was the case, literally ran across the parking lot, and, and it was a, I mean, brakes were hit hard, he jogged sideways, and then went through, because they come between the cars, and you have the two lines waiting to pick up their kids, and he cuts them off, and so, I mean, and their kids, they're going to do it, no matter how many times we yell at them, they're still going to do it. So it just, you know, more patience needs to be had, and I don't know how I teach patience to an adult at this point, good luck with it. But something needs to be done, Sheila had, no, okay. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up, it was something that's being talked about and worked on, and it was, it took up a lot of the meeting, that was a huge part of the conversation, so I just wanted to make sure I cleared it out before we do that.
Policy committee, we have a boatload of things on for first reading. And I, so then, I had some general questions. Do these seem like the types of stuff, things that are coming down as recommendations from the school board association? And so, I don't know what, you know, what we, which ones we are sort of optional, which ones are mandatory, new language, statute, something. So if I ask a question about one, let me know. But one of those that I questioned specifically about was the patriotic exercises policy. IMDA. It would appear to be something that we had before. IMDA, patriotic exercises. It doesn't, it's like, we're designating time for the national, or of allegiance, and we're, we're designating certain educational resources to teaching about the content of the pledge of allegiance, the national anthem, and then there's designating some certain weeks of the year, or certain days of the year as holidays, or educational holidays, to some extent now. And I'm just wondering where that's coming from, is that, why all of a sudden are we adopting that? Is that something that we have to have?
No, just coming from the state, no, just their recommendation, that's not, you know.
Not a mandate, recommendation.
And some of the stuff is like, you know, the statute's changing, you need to now have a policy about certain things.
Yeah.
And that's what it is. If this was just like, hey, you know, this is what we've, this is what we think you should do, then, I mean, I think I'd rather have no policy with regard to that, I don't, it's not a reason to have a policy in that respect. So is there not like, there's, there's nothing that's saying that the school has to do what's being proposed here, right?
This is the recommended, but that's on the what. Is that the policy?
It's the same one, it's like word for word. It's just.
But in accordance with federal law, the district shall offer education program each year on Constitution Day and Citizenship Day. So, I mean, shall, the district shall, in accordance with federal law, I mean, it's obviously, obviously something we have to do.
Well, I guess it just depends on what. 36 U.S.C., section 106.
Shall, is that not, that doesn't give you an option, may give you the options.
Maybe we just hold this one back, so we can figure this out.
I don't see any problem with it, though, I don't, I don't understand why there would be an issue with it. And in accordance with federal law, the district shall offer education programs each year on Constitution Day and Citizenship Day to commemorate September 17, what is Constitution Day? 1787 signing of the United States Constitution, and recognize all who, by coming of age or by naturalization, become citizens. Superintendent, or has a heard designate, shall establish administrative guidelines, ensuring that the district observes Constitution Day and Citizenship Day properly, and in a manner fitting the importance of the event. So in accordance with federal law, the district shall, you know, it doesn't, not may, or can, or might, but shall.
What are those two days? I just explained it right there. No, but like, they're new, those aren't days we already?
No, they've been here since September 17th of 1787.
That's constitutional.
Yeah.
No, they weren't designated, they weren't designated at that time.
Those days.
They were designated those in like, what looks like 2004 according to statute, so.
During the weeks of Memorial Day and Veterans Day, the district will devote time for exercises of a patriotic nature, including the discussion of the words, meanings, and history of the Pledge of Allegiance and the Star Spangled Banner. So will devote time, not may, but will.
Yeah, I'm just reading the statute that's referencing federal statute 36 U.S.C., section 106 says, regards to state and local observance, civil and educational authorities of states, counties, cities, and towns are urged to make plans for the proper observance of Constitution Day, Citizenship Day, and for complete construction, and for the complete instruction of citizens and their responsibilities and opportunities as citizens of the United States, in the state, locality, and where state resides. So there there's nothing mandatory in that statute.
It doesn't make sense, then, that the DOE would say, in accordance with federal law, the district shall.
Well, shall must not be binding, like, like you're perceiving it, like you're, like you're interpreting it, that's, that must be attached up there.
Even so, I don't, I mean, why would we not?
I think we do, yeah, I mean, I think that's the next thing, is do we want to hold this back to the other two?
But there are, there are two other parts to this, so, so everybody knows that, that's not the only thing we're talking about. The second part is Pledge of Allegiance, every school shall establish a period of time during each school day for the recitation of the Pledge of Allegiance. Pupil participation shall be voluntary. Peoples who do not participate in the recitation may sit or stand as they choose, but shall respect the rights of those peoples electing to participate. The third part of it is John Stark Day, General John Stark Day. New Hampshire observes General John Stark Day on the second Monday in April. Schools in the district shall commemorate the day, excuse me, with appropriate educational activities. And it does have all the legal references, so those are the ones, the RSAs.
I'd like to look at it more. So I moved that we take it off for first reading. And thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Right, you know, I, not that I necessarily have any particular problem with it, I, I think there's you know, there could be issues with if in second paragraph, during the weeks of Memorial Day, that there is a the, the district will devote time for exercises of a patriotic nature, including a discussion of the words, meanings, and history of the Pledge of Allegiance and Star Spangled Banner, which do include religious language that does not necessarily reflect the broad spectrum of religions in our, in our district, so I think if we are like, I have a concern that we're mandating, you know, instruction on, you know, parts of the, the parts of the Pledge of Allegiance particularly, that have religious meaning and religious undertones, so I would have a problem with that, if that's something that has to be mandated as a district to do. And it seems, it would seem odd to me that that would be something that, that, you know, under the circumstances, that the state would be saying that we had to do this, so. I, I certainly am comfortable with.
You looked that one up, yes. This is RSA 18918.
So that's what I would like to be able to do, is just sort of hook it up.
Yeah. Thank you.
The other thing that I had a question on was so I, I seem to remember we had a pretty lengthy discussion a couple years ago about animals on school grounds. This, these new IMG.
Okay.
I think that was. Right. And I, I seem to remember the resolution of that was that, you know, because we have folks that bring the pets to sporting events, and, you know, walking to school with their kids sometimes. And then there was some discussion about that. Like, I don't recall the resolution of that being no pets allowed at any time by anyone. Is that a different policy that I'm thinking of, or?
You're right, we did talk about it in 2020, and I don't remember that being the resolution either. I remember us talking about maybe clarifying the signs, because the signs were maybe confusing, but.
Well, that's animals.
Is it I M G A, service animals, is that the one you?
Well, IMG, in the class, and on school grounds.
I don't even have IMG.
It was in the email, because I looked at it.
We discussed, yeah, because we discussed that we did just look at it.
Is that right? For this coming meeting?
I M G is in the class.
Animals in the class and on school. So.
Animals, I M G A service.
No, service animals, but I M G is not that, I don't have it, I don't have it in my email.
Yeah, you did. I have it in my email, right here.
I have it, okay, do you see this email? For this coming Wednesday? I have, oh, I have IMDA and I M G A. I don't have it in here. Does anybody have a copy I could look at? Thank you. I didn't even have it in my packet for my.
I think the back part of it is where I'm, I'm trying to un-operize animal on school grounds.
And we can allow animals on school grounds as long as they're under their control.
I, I thought that that was the case, and this doesn't reflect any amendment in 2020, that's the, which maybe was one we looked at.
We never, maybe we discussed it, never updated it.
Or it's a different policy that we're looking at, because you know how.
Yeah, I could imagine.
Policies everywhere?
Yeah, so I just was, wanted to clarify, because I know that we had talked about that, and we should have consistency on the policy, throughout the policies.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, pull that one, we'll pull that one.
Yeah.
Change, right, it doesn't make any sense to you. Taking the pet custody, it's too personal.
I want to be, I want to take them all.
Yeah, they got rid of, the appropriate town official will be called and requested to impound all animals, used to say whose owners are not a fight for its policy, and now it's to find all animals taken into custody by school personnel.
I think the bicycle personnel is talking about, you know, who called the animal control.
Or that they shouldn't say taken into custody.
It says the appropriate town official will be called, and he's waiting for the police to come pick up the dog.
I, the way I read the report, it's full size. Whose owners are not applying for the policy.
Yeah. It is inartfully worded, but I think that basically what it's saying is, when a, when a school personnel calls the, the the town officials to request an impound of the animals. The, like.
It can also, as you're saying, if it's coming in the building or on property, being taken in custody, you know, this is Brian, has it been?
I have two cats and a dog that we've been dealing with.
Can we pull the, see if there's another? Anyone want to comment?
No, not at all.
Back until we can see if there's another.
Good catch. Thank you.
Yeah, definitely don't have it. J.
Why would they? Why would they call, they have impound, because they're.
Unauthorized.
Oh, don't have an owner here, or something like that.
Or if they're just, you know, if somebody's walking in the building, I mean, it would be hard for me to imagine that if the owner was here, that, that we would be taking any animal into custody or impounding. You know, basically.
Maybe one's loose and running around.
An animal shows up in the building.
Right.
Yeah, I know, they thought it there, so you won't have to show up, and I suppose.
Right. Any others?
Don't. It was, it was one of the type of, I can't even remember what it was at this point. Yeah. That's. Anyone else have any questions about the policy stuff?
Yeah. Sure. I'll make a motion, we move AC dash R, GCI, IC slash ICA, IF, IGD, IHAE, IHH, IHAK, IHL, IAM, HIJAM, IHMB, IHBA, AIHB, IHBBA, IHCA, IIB, IIC, IJK, IJK dash R, IJO dash KA, IKAA, IKAD, IKAD dash R, IKB, IKB dash R, IKFC, IKG, IL, ILD, ILDR, IMAH, IMC, and I M G A, to second reading.
Oh, second.
Thank you. Thank you.
Quick question?
Yeah.
The IHCA, is there going to be slight changes in that, are we moving that anywhere, or?
Summer activities?
Yeah, is that the one you said, there was slight?
Yeah.
Just the, just the statute reference.
Yeah, yeah.
So not an actual text.
Yeah. Good question, that's a good catch.
Okay, any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, and extensions, and a motion carries.
And then I will make a motion to withdraw policies, IGEA, IHBAA, R, ILDA.
Are those ones that we should wait until we get a final approval of the new ones that we're replacing us? This is what we typically do.
Are they not in here? They're like.
Yeah, these are first reading, the second. So usually when we approve second reading, what was.
Yeah. I withdrew my motion.
All right, then that's it for policy committee, I think, is that it?
That's it for committees.
That's it for committees.
Any stat nominations, recommendations, resignations?
Okay, I have two resignations. Resignation from Robert Soscher. That resignation is as of June 30th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to accept Robert Soscher's resignation with regret.
Sorry. Thank you, Joe, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Thank you, Joe. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those both, the extensions, not much cares.
Okay, resignation from Jennifer Malagreta.
I'll make a motion to accept Jennifer Malagreta's resignation with regret.
Any further discussion?
Can I just ask what did Jennifer Malagreta wish you had?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is that also affected G three? So that was motion by Tammy, second by Jasmine. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose, extensions, and that motion carries.
Okay, so I have nominations.
Yep.
A nomination for Emily White Elementary, a teacher grade two for the 22 23 school year.
Are we still? If she's approved this, we're still one.
That we're not feeling.
That we're not feeling. Okay. I'll make a motion to.
Accept nomination.
Accept the nomination of Emily White.
I'll second.
Further questions or comments about?
Can I ask again what she's doing?
Second grade teacher.
Thank you.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, extensions.
I have a nomination for Catherine Goss for middle school specialism for the 22 23 school year.
Make a motion to accept the nomination of Catherine Goss.
A second.
Thank you. Any further discussion about that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose and extensions, that motion carries.
Okay, so on that, that's the nominations.
Thank you. June 20th and 21st teacher days. Sounds like we need to. We need an official motion on that.
Yes.
Okay, so I'll take the motion to approve the use of personal days for the June 20th and 21st. First days where teachers would be at the school but without students.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jasmine.
I'll second.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any further discussion on that?
And that's just for those that have available personal days, currently they haven't.
We informally, and I think that this we sort of need because it's.
There needs to be a formal public vote on any decision we make in our public.
So. No, that was on a. So all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, pose, sessions, and that motion carries.
We could have come out of non-public and voted on it, but where everybody had left, we just didn't feel it was right to do that without.
Oh.
Everybody here.
The public stuff.
The public. The public.
That I did.
Specifically say we're going in on public and we'll be coming out in the public. Yeah.
Next up on the agenda is the Special Education Capital Reserve.
Okay, and the board needs to make a motion to withdraw up to 150,000. From the Special Education Capital Reserve Fund for the purpose of an unexpected special education.
So.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Joe. Is this? This is an additional.
A new place?
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Any further discussion about that? Noting that our discussion is limited and to. Because of the small nature of our school, it's, you know, it becomes very disrespectful to have who's being discussed and that's illegal and inappropriate. So if you have any discussion, they as possible. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, extensions, that motion carries.
That money we just put in there? Do we have money left in there for that?
Yeah, that that was from the switching it over because we didn't have the money, so we're going to put that money in. That was voted on at the. Yeah, just.
So it's not another one in addition to that?
Right. Yeah.
And then. New business? Nothing new business.
Nothing under the cover of the E S R funds. They just to remind you that the N H D O we will be coming on May 31st Tuesday. And they'll be doing the compliant monitoring for the E S R funds. We are completing that paperwork and getting it all ready for them.
I'm sure that's a nightmare.
There's a bit I'll do it.
Yeah.
That's why she's going to come to me. Yes.
High school H V A C system.
Yeah. Let's skip the minutes.
Oh. So I'll just touch. Do everything you need to do now.
Yes, so we'll go with high school H V A C if that falls within that. You can associate to walk through. Checking out equipment that some that needs to be replaced and that won't need to be replaced. What will we need to do? Just kind of got the nuts and bolts of what the system is like so that they can go back and continue to fill out their plans and their designs. And then get that information to us. So it was a good walkthrough from what I got. And it wasn't completely about, you know, this this dog work works, this this equipment's numerous, that's okay. It's they were getting a feel for the ground. So that's your update for high school. Quick, two quick other updates. The elementary school starts the 31st and equipment's already here, so it starts next Tuesday. Not interrupting with students at that time, just mechanicals in the background. And flooring starts June 20th and will be done by 4th of July.
That's high school floor.
The only other thing we discussed was just kind of potentially building on. You know, we've got lots of big projects we've been doing and we were just kind of looking. We'll call it four years into the future, trying to just figure out where we're going to go with some other stuff that, you know, will need to come up. And we're looking at that just as part of our. That's a good idea.
Great. That's it. Any questions, Brown? Good, portionment formula committee.
Yes, so we have, we're expecting to hear from the towns by June 15th for the town res. And I was able to get in touch with Rick Baker and he accepted.
Yay, perfect.
So do we need a vote, a formal vote on that by the board to select him as our?
And do we already select our folks?
We have not. We we need one Woodstock member, so that will be Kevin. And then we need somebody to volunteer or a nomination for Lincoln member. And I think maybe it makes sense for us to choose that tonight.
That would be good.
Unless anybody has an objection to that. I mean, everyone's here. There's no reason why we. Why we couldn't do that, I guess. So if anyone has any interest in being on that committee or has a. Recommendation or nomination for the board, the Lincoln Board member of that committee, we don't need an at-large.
No, the towns appoint that.
Yeah, okay.
You're a pretty big candidate, Jay.
I I don't think that I have.
I thought you were a little wood stuff.
I know.
Oh, really?
Well, temporarily, but I won't be for long, so I don't think.
I was on last time. I think it's over on my notes, but I'm also a select board member, so I'm not sure of the appropriate, how appropriate that would be. And I think actually I may be the only option for Lincoln as far as a select board member anyway, so, yeah.
What about Brian? Is Brian interested?
Is Brian here?
I guess.
Woodstock.
It's not. It's not an easy committee.
That's what I mean I would do, but I don't. That school side.
You. Yeah, it's not easy.
How many times do they meet and over what period of time?
Frigging many.
It doesn't have to be because it's it's when once they have the meeting and they have a couple of meetings and discuss it. Then they determine they do a recommendation to the board to say whether to move forward or not.
Okay.
I can do it from Lincoln if nobody else said. No. It's kind of inviting.
So.
Thank you, Joe. Well, I mean, it is. It's it's kind of, it's almost like you both towns, their little freesomes.
We have all the information.
Present all the information.
We give all the information.
But you have to argue your fight to Rick Baker. You've got to be convincing on your argument of why you think that it should be this percentage or that percentage and why. And you have to successfully.
And you'll have all the numbers. You'll have all the charts.
And then he will vote which way that he believes is the fairest and the truest way to go. And then that is brought to the board. So the three Lincoln members will think this way and the three Woodstock members will think that way. But whatever Rick Baker decides is the.
Wait, Kevin will be on my team?
No, you will be arguing against each other.
That's not necessarily true. But but I.
Well, okay, history, so that's how it is.
Yeah.
And and no, and that is how it goes. Say that's not necessarily how it is. It is how it goes and it is how it went and that's what has to be done.
Doesn't doesn't mean it has to go that way. Yeah, we'll figure it out. I'll do it. Unless you want to. Oh, no, you can't.
I may be. I may be.
It's not that I don't want to do it. It sounds interesting to me. It sounds very interesting to me. I just.
Unless there's somebody else that's going to raise their hand and volunteer, does nothing.
Sorry.
No. No.
I'm raising my hand.
What's that?
I said I raised my hand and volunteered, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, then we select Jasmine and Kevin for our members. Our and our selection for out of town member would be Mr. Baker, which is great.
I'm going to select you. Select a.
They'll be letting me know by 15.
So they so they'll pick somebody from their select board and somebody from the community. All right, super content evaluation. I've set a deadline. Well, hopefully everyone provides by that.
That was just in a like in a week's factor, right?
Didn't have done yours yet?
Yeah.
Mostly.
I haven't seen any of them, so let me just say.
Yours by the end of this meeting.
So those who are given last. Yeah, so the.
If those are just handed in a sealed envelope.
You can just email me.
Okay.
And. Hello, it's the Academy.
Yeah, just an update on that. We will be administration will be meeting with the teachers' moms, in fact, and getting input from the teachers.
Great.
Now, remember, there was already a meeting for for parents, anybody outside the district or just. You know, questions that they may have had, whether it be what's the curriculum like.
I don't remember any meeting. When was that?
Right, this was. So then that was at the very beginning. That was the first meeting that they put up, he put out there. And I mean, we're not finished with the process by any means.
Prior to them coming to us or after that?
No, exactly.
I didn't care anything about it. And how were people informed about me?
And Dave was the one to set that one up.
Is it possible that he just went to L R T? L R T. He had said, when he stood here, he had said that he was, he wanted to get some information. We stated that we needed more.
Exactly.
And he stated. And he said that he hadn't benefited, but he was about to. Like that was his, he was hoping that he came in here and got an answer and then went with the solid thing. We didn't give him an answer.
So all I did was give out information about, you know, what our curriculum was like, what we had in our middle school, high school. What we have now, the questions about different things and about the math program and whatnot at the high school. And then I just gave out this information that. It's no new information. It's just information that I get. So what we're going to do is then the board requested that we get more, you know, we go and look into this more in detail. So we are having a meeting with the staff, some staff members tomorrow. And if we need more staff members, if all the staff members want to do it, then have a meeting, then we'll do it after school and do it that way. So we'll just, right now we have a meeting set up and if more staff members want to be there, we'll we'll reschedule and, you know, make sure everybody is.
Well, definitely we should, yeah. Staff and the community.
Is it, do you intend to have sort of an open meeting? Where where community members can come and ask questions?
I think that would be a recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, I would definitely make that recommendation.
It seems like there's some significant community interest in just knowing what it's about, having some questions answered, so.
Yeah, I think it's going to be a longer process than when you expect it to be because I really think it's a big decision.
So in progress. That's the update.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. I do not see students, so.
I do have a few things. So first from Mr. Labs, would like to share the next Wednesday, June 1st, is the first ever Linwood. We are participating in the Bike to School Day, so students are meeting at the Kink's Slip at 7:00 and riding down Paula Road to school. He's organizing that. From Ms. Whedon, ELO Final Presentations begin next week. This school board is always welcome to attend any of the presentations. Lizzie Drew did an internship with elementary education, working with Diane Pamplin, Sarah Boden, Paula Hood. Special thank you to those elementary teachers who are supporting the ELO program. Dakota Perry and Madeline Thermo did an internship with Linwood Childcare Center focusing on early elementary education. Emma McNamara did an art inter internship focusing on zines or design. I don't know how to say it. Zines, thank you. Her zine displays are located on the ELO board in the main hallway. Britta Robertson did a medical internship working with the Linwood Ambulance Service. She was able to attend calls and gain hands-on experience. She will also be E M T certified in June. Big thank you to all the community partners that support the Linwood ELO program. Then from Mrs. Krill and Miss Witcher, they had an awesome walking field trip to see the 2021 film version of West Side Story. Night through 12 went. And I don't know what she has. She says you haven't really lived until you bring 90 students to see a musical in a movie theater with popcorn and soda pop at 9:30 in the morning. So thank you for remembering the importance of field trips for students, especially since it's been a while since COVID. Also, Miss Witcher and Miss Krill will be meeting with the Stoffler's eighth grade students on Friday to discuss ninth grade expectations for a new year as well as summer reading. We will also plan to hold a ninth grade new high school orientation similar to what we did last year, which many students found to be helpful. Likely Thursday, August 25th between 1:00 and 3:00. And then just one thing for me, we had a virtual author visit last week. Poet Ken Nesbit, who's a very fine poet, he did a case of two session and then a three through five session. Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And community.
So a question.
Yeah.
On the agenda, it says your video and audio ring this meeting.
True. Typically, yeah.
Okay.
If this thing, if this works.
Okay, so shouldn't you have to come back in after non-public open to the people that are on audio and video watching for your vote and then close the meeting?
There wasn't anybody there.
No, but how do we know? When you're audioing it and videoing it.
We know who signed in by the computer.
Okay, that's fine, but I still. Practice that recorded, so I can look at it later.
What do you, what vote are you referring to?
I don't, any vote, doesn't matter.
When they come out of.
When you come out of non-public, you should.
Well, you have a sign back.
I might happen to click.
No, that's ridiculous. Absolutely not. It's just, it's ridiculous, redundant and unnecessary, so no. No.
Because you could go, I could rush on and click on it.
Stop because the answer is no.
Look into it, see what the legality is. We'll go back to me later.
The answer again would be no.
So, you know, in any event, John, we have, we have really good minutes these days, extremely good minutes these days. So anything that that happens after, and as you know, when we go into non-public, if we anticipate a vote afterwards, we usually inform anybody that's here. Whether or not, you know, whether or not we intend to have a vote afterwards so that, you know, we you can stick around and we usually call folks back in to do that. And so we we do what we can. The the issue with with the recording device is typically. You know, the non-publics will stretch out. you know, the non-publics will stretch out and Sharon, who runs it, usually goes home. So we don't have it. And, but we, we keep notes on what the votes are, who's going on what, and, and, you know, she does an excellent job with the minutes. And they're typically extremely detailed. So I, I think that that generally resolves most issues. I mean, if there's something specific that you, you know, let us know. But I, generally speaking, I think when, when you go into non-public, that machine goes away. And so the recording of anything that happens after isn't necessarily on there. But we do have, you know, we do make active efforts to make sure that anyone that's here that wants to be a part of it is able to come back in and listen.
Aren't the minutes the legal?
Yes.
Recording. Yeah.
And a good example is last week's non-public session, we discussed something that we came back this week and did a public vote because we didn't have, with, everybody went home and we didn't think it was right to come out of non-public, make the vote to an empty room, and then go home. Instead, we waited and made the vote tonight while people were here.
And that's better.
You were here when we did it unless you came in late.
Yes, no. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Any other, it's.
Thanks. As a parent and a teacher, I just want to say please, in terms of the LRT possibility of coming, please let your priority be, how will this benefit our students? And I, what we are hearing is anything from it's two kids to its fifteen kids. We're hearing they're not gonna miss any school. They're gonna miss a whole morning and a whole afternoon and a whole, they're gonna miss Tuesday morning, Wednesday afternoon, all day Thursday. We're hearing wildly different things. And, you know, when we went remote that first spring and then the next, all, all of last year, Linwood did a great job of being in person. But we did offer a remote option for students whose parents wanted to keep them home. And I believe it was this board that said, no more. We're not offering a remote option because it's not good for students. And it's really not feasible to ask a teacher to teach a live in-person class. That might be hands-on, that doesn't translate to Google Classroom, that now the teacher has to make a whole separate thing for Google Classroom. Right? So we voted not to do that anymore. Just realized that we are asked to educate students from outside our district that are missing our classes. That's almost the same thing. We're gonna be asked to put things on Google Classroom that we wouldn't be putting on Google Classroom because we're not, you know, if I'm doing something hands-on, it doesn't need to be on Google Classroom. And so I just, I think, I think a couple of people, the middle school in particular, stand frustrated because maybe it's two kids and they're not gonna miss any school. Maybe it's fifteen kids and they're gonna miss two full school days a week. And it's our job to educate them. And we feel strongly about helping all of our students succeed. And then how does that impact our students in our community? How does that impact our students on the Linwood race team who bust their butt? Most of them aren't in a, you know, weekend's key program and there's a lot of pride in that. How does that affect them when, you know, full-time racers come in? You know, do they race for Linwood? Do they not? I just think there's a lot of questions. And it could be great. Maybe LRT is going to hire someone, a teacher, to be the coordinator. It could be done, but it could also just be dropped in our lap and we could be told, let's figure this out. And I would say that would not benefit the students of this community.
I'd like to just comment quickly that everything that you are relaying to us from my standpoint, I think I can speak behalf of some of these people, has nothing to do with anything that was discussed. So there was discussions of, let's say, leaving a half in the morning, coming in later and sometimes leaving a little bit early. But it was never tied into having you or a teacher or anybody have to teach outside of their spectrum. That's part of the design that, why we sent them back to come up with the plan was how can it work around what we already do? It wasn't going to be going remote. There's going, if any of those things had come up to us, then we would have had a discussion. I just want to maybe say we're in a small town and like every day there's another rumor about something else that's going on. And as far as the seven of us sitting here, we had one meeting, we gave our opinion. And nothing is like, there is no kids right now. So if there's two kids or a hundred kids, there's no kids. There's no program. There's no coming out of class. There's no going back to class. There's no racing for the other team. No, nothing exists as of today. There was no plan presented to us at all. So I think a lot of it is.
Has there been plans in that discussion?
And a lot of it is, and it, and it might be talk at LRT and they could be selling the program and let them. But I think everybody that's sitting here has an opinion on what their thoughts are. And mine might be different than Kevin's because I think that there's certain things I like and certain things I dislike. But yet we've still not been presented with anything, never mind the amount of information that is running around. And, and I think the teachers at our school should trust in the fact that we're not building a program without their knowledge. The program doesn't exist. And I will say that and LRT can take that with them, that they could sell people and some guy could be buying a house this weekend to move his family up here. It doesn't mean he's going to ski for LRT out of this school. There is no program today. And so it like, the tricky part, I think, is that if people talk and then, and there's a lot of people connected to that LRT program. And there is people moving and I know that these things are going on. But they can do whatever they want on their side and nothing has actually happened. Outside of, I think, were you here when he spoke? Outside of the discussion that he had with us, we gave some direction. We said you don't have enough information. We'd like to see a plan. But other than that, that's where it's all ended.
And, and the teachers trying to seek more information, we went to other teachers that we thought might know. And, and that's where I got the information I shared with you about the two half days of the holidays. Some people are talking in detail.
But that's it. This was a, it was a proposal. I, I can give an example, like you, you could, it's not a half a day to take away from the teacher or make you have to, as a teacher, teach remotely or set up two different things or worry about if the student's not here. There was a little bit of thought put into it and, and about how can they utilize those, say, the free time periods or that they're not in, I'm not, this is why we don't talk about this stuff. And that's why I don't like a small town. The point is, and I'll end it, there is no program. There is no teachers teaching remotely at all.
Yeah, I didn't really mean teaching remotely. I just meant the.
Coming up with an alternative.
Sure, is there a recording of this?
And, and I just don't understand how an MOU was drawn up. What was the MOU?
There isn't one. We don't have one yet. No, they're, they're, no, LRT is working on something to present to us. We have, we don't have anything.
Dr. McEntire, the last meeting, that she was presenting the MOU that you gave to the sports.
She made a statement that she had a meeting with them, is when I walked.
They asked me questions about what we already have in place and I responded and I gave them the answers to those.
So that they could develop an MOU that, we don't, we haven't seen anything yet. We haven't seen any kind of proposal. And they made lots of references to lots of ideas and options and whatnot. You know, this, this school that did it this way and this school did it this way. And in this different state, they did this. So there was options that they mentioned that could be done.
Yeah.
But there's nothing, we have nothing yet.
And they may very well be selling the idea to their membership to say, it could be X, it could be Y. And they are trying to gauge interest in the program. They did the exact same thing to us, except what we did is you have no plan here. And, and in order to, for them to formulate a plan, the district needs to say, this is what we have. If you can adapt a plan to present to us that fits within the parameters of how we work right now, then the board can review and say, does this work or not? And from, from the last meeting, your comments about wanting to be involved, it sounds like there is a meeting where teachers will be involved and be able to voice questions. I mean, absolutely, like that is paramount to anything moving forward. And we will not move forward unless the teachers at this school are able to ask questions and get the answers to those questions before any plan is fully presented to us.
I don't think anybody on this board would approve anything without involving our, our, our community and our teachers and our staff. And, no. I know I wouldn't. I don't think any of us would. So.
Thank, thank you for hearing my.
I, I hear you loud and clear, but relax. We're not there yet.
When I sat here, I heard the MOU was given to the district's attorney. You were all here. You heard that.
No, that's what's at MOU. Something went to the district's attorney. Yeah.
There was a discussion about, about the process and, and that, my, well, let me, I'll give you my recollection. My understanding was, it was a discussion about the process in which we would go through. And one of the steps was reaching the MOU and then setting it to the district's attorney for review. I don't recall hearing that, that any MOU that they presented, you know, but that's so. Sliver. But I do believe that that's gonna be the process. Once, once the district has, you know, reached some kind of proposed plan, you know, we have to make sure that it's going to, you know, work for us in terms of our, you know, all of the risk management factors that we have to consider and the legal issues that could potentially come up. So once, I think it will end up at that stage potentially, if we get to the point where there is an understanding. But we're in the early stages. It's always difficult because people, as Brian said, you get different stories from different people. And everyone has a little piece of the information, maybe getting it from other sources. But we, we just caution everybody to wait till, you know, ask the questions at the meetings that, that are available and present your concerns for sure and encourage other staff members to do so. But also, you know, and give, give the, give the, the, it, it a chance to fully develop as well. Because it may be something worthwhile and, you know, we just need to, we're just nowhere near there at this point.
Okay, but I'm not against the idea. I'm against not having a plan and saying yes.
Yeah.
Absolutely. So are we?
I don't, never have. Presented at the next meeting, it's not an answer. We're, we're far from giving an answer, I think, in any way, shape or form.
Okay, thank you.
Any other community commentary? Hearing them? I will. I don't believe we have not published that.
No. Let's do it, John.
Do, did you have? Bulled by members of the board here. So I will accept the motion to adjourn.
Very good.
Oh, great. Thank you. All those in favor? And we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming.